Like to call the order, the Clive City Council Meeting of September the 8th. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy. Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michael and Anani.
Here.
Very good. Council member McCoy is with Brandon Grantchild, so he cannot be here tonight. So we miss him, but wish him well. Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next would be approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
We approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to a couple of proclamations. One is to declare this month as library card signup month for September. So let me read this this evening. Whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education development of children, whereas librarians are literacy experts, offering everything from preschool story hours to summer reading clubs that sustain school year learning. Whereas libraries provide a learning environment that fosters joyful exploration, encouraging students to research subjects that they are genuinely curious about. Whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together, engage with one another. Whereas librarians provide a variety of books and resources to serve everyone in the community, making knowledge and ideas available so that people have the freedom to choose what to read. Whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams, explore new passions and interests, and find their voice. Whereas libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new services that connect closely with community needs even during a pandemic. Therefore, be it resolved that September Library Signup Month in Clive is declared, and we encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card if they don't have one. And when you do sign up for a library card, they will provide you with a cool set of sunglasses and a nifty library card, which, in case you don't know, next week you can use to ride Dart for free. So next week is Library Card Free Ride Week on Dart. So if you don't have a library card, we encourage you to do so, so you can get nifty gifts and get access to a lot of resources, including those that are online.
I already have a card. Can I retroactively get one of those sunglasses?
You know, we could probably make a deal with the library for that. All right, our next resolution is for Beggar's Night. And basically, our resolution is declaring October 30th as Beggar Nights as we have, because we've checked with our other neighbor communities, and that's the date that they've selected. And the time would be 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So I hereby declare that Beggar's Night in the city of Clive will be October 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Now, if someone would prefer that I read the entire resolution, just let me know. I'm not seeing any heads indicate that. In fact, I think for subsequent years, we may look at just kind of a continuing resolution where we will just agree to follow what our neighbors are doing, and we won't have a plural proclamation. Is there an objection to looking into that? Seeing none. Matt? Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda is citizen presentation. This is the opportunity for someone to approach the council for an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, I'll let you check and see if there's anyone online wishing to do so. While you do that, I'll just read our pillars. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Pete, do we have anyone online who wants to address the council tonight on an item not on the agenda?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Do we have anyone in the council who would like to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move from citizen presentation to our consent items.
We approve.
Second.
We have motion in a second to pursue, to approve the consent items. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And our consent items are approved by a vote of four to zero. I'm not used to being in such suspense as far as whether that's going to pass or not. Richard, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I have the exciting opportunity to introduce our newest operations specialist for the Parks team here tonight. We have Brandon Huff. Brandon comes most recently to us from Overland Park, Kansas. He's got a wide variety of skills that he has obtained at a bunch of different locations, and we're very, very excited to have him on board, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Brandon, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to join the city. Like you said, I came from the city of O.P., where I worked on the construction crew for parks. So yeah, I'm just super excited. Didn't know I was going to speak tonight. I did not prepare anything, but I'm very excited.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
You have one very important question.
Yes.
Are you a cheese fan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm excited for Sunday.
I think some of us up here are as well, so.
That's what we like to hear.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
All right, we'll move into our action items, and it looks like Jeff's up with wastewater and hauled waste.
Mayor, council, good evening. We're here tonight for the third and final consideration of the proposed ordinance number 1125, amending chapter three of Title VIII, industrial and commercial wastewater and hauled waste. All the documents are in there. Nothing's changed for last one. I've heard nothing back. We did send out a letter to Wittern's and Loves Trucks Truck Stop last Friday, letting them know about the proposed changes with the information on what those differences and fees would be. I have heard nothing back from them either. In addition tonight to the third and final consideration is also a resolution amending the fee schedule or the schedule of administrative penalties for violations of said code. And that would be necessary if you so choose to approve the third and final reading.
Very good. Questions for Jeff?
One quick one. Do you know if most of our surrounding communities have all approved this? I know there was some angst up in Ankeny about it. I was just curious if you've heard anything.
I have heard nothing on any of, if many of them, actually. I don't know where their third reading is lying. I know the intent was to have it done by October 1st, so I'm assuming most of them are close to their third reading at this time, but I have not heard anything.
Just curious.
So we're looking.
The ordinance number 1125 be considered for the third time. Place points passage and adopted.
Second.
Motion in a second on the ordinance. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And that. Thank you. This suspense is just killing me.
One, one absence.
So that passes by a vote of four to zero. Ordinance number 1125 is declared to have been enacted. And we have a resolution.
Move the resolution and schedule administrative penalties for violation industrial pretreatment of ordinance regulating hauled waste and regulating phytol grease.
Second. We have motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk timely post the results of this? Very good. That passes by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amanda, the 86th Street Neighborhoods Plan.
Let me get the screen share started here. All right. So tonight, after a, or over to your planning process, we are finally ready to bring forward to you the 86th Street Neighborhoods Plan for adoption. Up on the screen is just a quick, high-level overview of the timeline and how we got to today. And then, just as a quick overview of some of the different engagement opportunities, I will not read all of these out loud for you guys, but the staff, we, us and our planning consultants, we sent direct mailings to every property owner, rental unit, and business that is in the district. We had, of course, the Community Vision Survey that got a lot of information. There were also signs in the district. There were posters out in the district for different parts of this process. There was the open house at Laney and Park that was well-attended, as well as offered as a virtual option. So we have just all these different opportunities that we had done for people, including discussions with the Plant and Zoning Commission and City Council at various times throughout the process here. And then we had just a quick example of some of the mailings and posters and signs that were out in the community throughout the project. So the Plant and Zoning Commission did consider the adoption, or their recommendation for adoption of the plan at their meeting last week. There was some attendance by the public. There is a quick summary of some of those comments that was included in your staff report. But I did want to call attention to two graphics in particular that had quite a bit of discussion about them. This first one here does show the plan, the high-level plan for the flood-prone property buyout area and the immediate surroundings. There was one error pointed out at the meeting. This property right here, and it's one of the Glacier apartment buildings, was categorized inadvertently into the yellow low-density residential. So that's been corrected, and will be updated in the final draft that we get. But you can see here, there is opportunity for medium-density residential on the fringe of the flood buyout area. That would be things like townhomes, quads, maybe like an eight-plex kind of unit, but would not be a typical zoning designation for apartments, you know, three-story, multiple-building kind of development. And then there is this bit right here that is currently commercial, shown that could support high-density residential matching, not necessarily the same style, but similar level of density to what is located to the north of it there. So there were conversations and some concerns brought up as far as this kind of area shown here and here at the meetings. Those are indicated as areas for potential infill residential development. I'll come back to this slide. Here's the next one we're going to talk about briefly. You can see that blue area is the missing middle housing. That corresponds to kind of generally this area shown up here. So that's just indicating those lots that have sufficient lot depth that you could develop in between if there was a willing buyer, willing seller development relationship. Just that there would physically be space to add additional units there. Could be a cottage court, accessory dwelling units, lots of different options laid out in the plan, but no specific development proposals have been received on that. There was quite a bit of conversation also around the flood buyout program. Since that is not specifically part of the plan, I'm not going to get into a lot of details on that unless you all have some additional questions there. And then this graphic had some discussion as well as far as understanding of what missing middle housing is. I just kind of covered that with the townhomes, quads, small, single-family cottage courts. Again, that information is detailed in the plan, and I know we've discussed that with the council and our different commissions. But just for any of the public that might be here tonight, I wanted that to be a little more clear that that is not apartments typically that you would be seeing, any sort of like apartment complex development in this kind of missing middle housing area. It's really focused on that gentle density and finding ways to incorporate housing into the neighborhood largely as it exists today. And then again, this is a screenshot of some text in the plan, just as these housing opportunities will be realized mostly through market-driven conditions. In other words, when a property owner is willing to sell to a builder or developer or develop their lands, these opportunities will be realized. That is in reference to these housing, this map here, and some of those missing middle and gentle density recommendations that are in the plan. So not a city-led effort for redeveloping in the residential area, except, of course, what we have in the plan around Laney and Park and then the flood buyout area specifically, with those open space developments with some opportunity for French development. So we're asking for your approval tonight. I know this was discussed at the strategic planning. And as I'd stated, staff and Plant and Zoning Commission both recommend approval. So the next step would be to begin implementation of those recommendations and action items that you all did identify. And then also, once the plan is formally adopted later this fall or early winter, there would be some post-approval community engagement and notices that would go out to the community. That would also give opportunity as we work with other departments, like with the Laney and Park project, and kind of figuring out what those next steps are and how people can get engaged. So that'll be going out later this year. And so with that, I would take any questions?
We'll start with Susan. Do you have any questions?
No. I do know that some of the residents have had concerns about the gentle density proposal with an expectation that we were potentially looking to put roads in and that kind of thing. And so it's good to hear your clear discussion about, you know, no city-led plans to do that at this time.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone here have questions? Go ahead, Eric.
Any other feedback that you have from, from the community then? Or as far as, other than the gentle density and the propensity for the housing?
So we did get 10 comments. Yes, we did get 10 comments on the draft review that were included in your packet. That draft was out for the month of June, and we had, at the last check last week, 376 unique people had gone on and reviewed that, or unique internet IP address kind of access points have looked at that document. And those comments were almost exclusively all related to circulation projects with getting into some more specific details on some particular problem areas. And those will definitely be incorporated into the specific next steps and strategic planning and budgeting processes in years to come as we're able to address those. Some of them do require some larger investment, things like this traffic signal is in the way of being able to make a more accessible ramp. Some of those are not things that can be solved immediately. Some of them are more low-hanging fruit that staff's already in the process of trying to get addressed for people.
Amanda, after, you know, working on this with you on the committee for, you know, two years now, I just want to congratulate you and the rest of the members in the committee that really did an outstanding job in community development right there, helping develop this, and great input from our citizens. This is really a catalyst to help redevelop the eastern neighborhoods in the 86th Street area. It goes right along with our efforts on, you know, stormwater and flood-prone buyout. So it's a very timely project, and I look forward to see it from a long-term, a long-term benefit right there. So it's been a great project.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah, so going back to the gentle density and the middle housing piece, have your comments and your discussions, has it dispelled much of the concerns that the residents had? Because I know I dealt with some phone calls this week about it. You helped me with, with something like that, and very much appreciative of that. Has that dispelled most of those kind of, maybe unfounded rumors about the city's going to come in where they're going to put in a road right in the middle of our backyard and throw up condos? Because that's, that's what I heard, right?
Yes.
And that was obviously inaccurate, but.
Yeah, so I think for the most part, most people are more comfortable that I've spoken to. There are a couple that I believe might still have some concerns with that. So, but by and large, the people who've reached out over the last about week and a half, they seem to not be concerned for the most part. Said there are still a couple out there.
Anything we need to speak on? Do we have anyone here in the chamber who would like to address the council? If so, please come forward and identify yourself with your address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Dominique Selman. I actually live in the flood buyout zone, 1500 Northwest 78th Street. And she had mentioned some of the signs. We actually just became aware of this, of us being part of the 86th Street reconstruction last week, when someone was going door to door. The sign that was pictured, it was along the sidewalk on the buy, on the buyout zone, where if you were walking to Greenbelt, you saw it, and my husband actually snapped on it. It referenced the Green Belt project that was going on, not 86th Street. And from what we saw, it was additional walking trails, wetlands, which we were okay with. I've talked to numerous neighbors since Saturday and even today, which is why I was running behind. And everyone I've talked to is not wanting to move the park, take out the park. The park is used by a lot of kids and even teens to play basketball and communicate with each other, even neighborhood kids. And then we're also concerned it's being in a flood zone. We don't think it makes sense to be building medium-density, high-density, low-density properties in this flood zone. We, we also like, our concern is, if we're building other properties, what's going to happen to the nature aspects that we love? We love all the trees and all the, just general nature, the wildlife. And so that's just part of our concern, is we feel we were kind of blindsided. We didn't know about it. We didn't get the mailings. We didn't get the emails. We literally just found out last week, and my husband and I almost didn't find out because we were walking on Greenbelt. The guy just happened to come by and see us coming home. So that's just a concern, and my across-street neighbors even here to comment too.
I think Amanda can comment on some of the concerns and I think address some of those. Amanda?
Um, so if we look at where the development, redevelopment in the area is proposed here, you can see there is this line here, and the call out is for a ridgeline trail. It says above 837. 837 is in reference to an elevation that more or less corresponds to the current 100-year floodplain. So what you're seeing proposed here for that kind of redevelopment area would be all located outside of the floodplain at this time. There was a lot of conversation about flooding and flood concerns and what impact development would have at the Plant and Zoning Commission meeting. And also, another important thing to note is, as we do projects in this neighborhood or elsewhere in the city, things will be brought into conformance with the post-construction stormwater management manual, particularly for an area like this that was developed before any sort of modern stormwater management existed and has undersized storm sewer pipes, things of that nature. Any sort of projects, those being city projects such as the Harbach reconstruction or other development in the area, should have a positive impact on stormwater management since they will be meeting current modern standards. As far as the engagement and outreach efforts, there were signs, as was noted. Those were posted at all of the parks in the neighborhood, at Crestview School, a couple in the flood-prone buyout area. There was some along 86th Streets and in the concentration around the different multifamily buildings. There was also some posters that Clive Community Services gave people information, put up posters, as well as some of the local businesses that accepted those to hang up as well. I do not have a list of those businesses.
Right. So just to sum up, we're not planning to build anything in the flood zone. In fact, we're prohibited from doing so. And then as far as parks go, we're actually talking about greatly expanding park space. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Yes. So as you can see here, the current park is shown. It's about here on this parcel. So this will be a much larger park space in the future. So that area was shown as a possibility to kind of integrate what's currently at George Lundberg Park into the rest of the buyout area. There then, of course, is the significant reinvestment council's preparing to make at Laney and Park that will improve the parks in this area, definitely. As far as being able to construct anything in the buyout area, anything purchased with funding that was associated with FEMA would have a restriction that it couldn't be developed. To date, I believe the only three properties that have been purchased with those funding is right down here on the corner. So technically, the other properties could be developed on, be that for different park amenities that might surpass what would be allowed by FEMA or for the potential for redevelopment. However, it has not been council's direction that you want to see redevelopment in the floodplain. So that is not the direction that that program is taking. And this would be consistent with not putting redevelopment into those areas that would be within the floodplain or below the base flood elevation.
Eric, did you have?
No, I, and to answer my question, the redevelopment of George Lundgreen Park, which actually looks like it's greatly expanded. It's just a configuration that utilizes stormwater management and flood-prone areas. Thank you.
Yeah. And I would just add that this is a high-level concept. There would be additional planning as we got to the actual open space and parkland development. There is probably a seven-to-10-year timeframe left on completing the acquisitions in the area. Now, there could be some interim outdoor recreation uses kind of in the main core where the city's already had quite a bit of the buyout. So there will be additional public engagement on what are the park amenities? Where are they? What do they look like? So that will be forthcoming in, in future years.
Just to remind the council, too, any of those acquisitions in this area are all voluntary.
Yeah. So do we have, or are we planning on creating like an email distribution list like we did with Indian Hills Woods for this project? Because I would suggest that that would probably be a good idea to be able to communicate with all of these residents who are impacted by this, especially going forward, right, as, as we start continuing to file this?
Absolutely. There is an email signup on the project website, createclive.com. So if anyone is interested in getting updates that have not signed up for that previously, that should still be live and able to be signed up for.
How are we getting the word out to these residents that they can sign up for an email distribution list?
That was in some of the direct mailings that went to people.
Perhaps we could look at other avenues to convey that information, whether it's the newsletter or the website. A lot of people don't, don't know about that. So I think we need to continue to message that out.
Absolutely.
Even, even a banner on the main city website, because this is something, I mean, this is a transformational change. We should be highlighting that, right? So.
Amanda, I can certainly work on getting something ready to go for the October newsletter, pending action taken by the council tonight.
Yeah, that'd be great.
One question I do have. So, you know, you talked about how we could turn some of the acquired areas into temporary, you know, green spaces, or maybe, you know, some sort of natural space. Is, is there any projections where, you know, we would have to take down Lundberg Park before, you know, some of those other amenities or other areas open up?
No, I don't think that would be something that we would consider to eliminate the park before other improvements were in place. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Other, other questions? Is there anyone in the council who wishes to address the council on the 86th Street Plan? Seeing no one come forward, what we're looking for here?
Resolution.
A couple folks who are still interested in discussion.
Please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
My name's Kevin Hubert. I live at 1600 Northwest 78th Street, Clive. Kind of reiterate what we said, the Zonion Planning Commission, we didn't know about this. A lot of my neighbors didn't know about it. I've got people that live across the street from me that didn't know about it. People that live behind me that don't know about it. I know business owners on 86th Street that don't know anything about it. I did get mail on Harbach. We did clearly see stuff was going to happen to Harbach this, two years in the planning. This goes right through my backyard. I mean.
What goes through your backyard?
This area in the middle, I guess. And that's dotted out. I mean, Harbach isn't in my backyard. I'd like something like this showing the plan, not just a general plan saying, hey, we're in the middle of this area. And when I think 86th Street, I do not think 86th Street. And when I saw the signs, like she said, at the bottom of our street, I figured it was for the bottom of our street. This looks like a plan that the city is promoting. I don't know how it's not a plan that the city is promoting. We're putting $26 million worth of property taxes right above where we took out these houses, correct? And we know. And we know that's $26 million with the property taxes. How do we know that?
Not sure where you're getting that number from.
That number was said at the last meeting. Yeah. We know what's going there or we don't know what's going there.
Um, so I believe that reference is that we know the assessed value of the properties in the buyout area was approximately $25 million. Um, so the general efforts within the entire neighborhood to recapture that value through the incremental improvements, not just along this area for this entire approximately square mile of the city. That's kind of the general goal is to recapture what is going to be removed from the flood buyout area through other, you know, improvements to existing homes, some of those infill we talked about redevelopment of some of the commercial, reinvestment in the parks and trails, it will help increase property values as well. So we're not anticipating that, you know, these 12 parcels or so shown here with the medium density residential would result in 20 million plus dollars of assessed value on just that area.
That includes the commercial properties as well.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's a bulk of that number then.
Yes, yes. The commercial properties are the bulk of that number.
Earlier you said this was high level and some of this would be seven to 10 years down the road. Could you just elaborate on that a bit?
Yeah. So right now, um, the city is still in the process of acquiring properties in the flood buyout. At the time we made this graphic, uh, you can see the properties that have been purchased through that program have a red outline in them. There may have been some additional closing since this was created. Uh, since that is a continuing, ever evolving program that we have. So just from looking at the funding willingness of current property owners to sell grant opportunities. We've estimated to get the core area will probably likely take another seven to 10 years with that financial investment from the council. I would think it would be unlikely that you would see a developer coming in to try to do much redevelopment in this area until you've realized kind of this flood buyout, re-envisioned outdoor space. That would really be the catalyst that would make this an attractive area for some infill development.
But short term, that green area will probably be turned into space to use for recreational purposes. At least Park and Rex is looking at that.
Yes.
You have further questions?
I just would like to be contacted if there's a two-year plan with lines drawn through my backyard. I don't understand that.
Amanda, could you repeat?
It's not difficult to get ahold of me. You know where I live.
Could you repeat that signup link?
Uh, yes, createclive.com, just one word. And you know, as I said, we did send a couple of direct mailings. There were four articles in the city newsletter that also would be direct mail for anyone that gets a water bill. There were the signs at the public parks and other community areas.
Well, I think Pete's gonna make sure we get something in the October newsletter that'll emphasize that and make sure that everyone gets signed up and gets the information.
Yeah, I would underscore what Amanda shared though, the, the work that the leadership group with the planning process and staff did with the outreach, that's an extensive investment the city has made in trying to engage with residents. And it'll be important that we continue that throughout the course of the project in each of its phases.
Just something to add on that, part of that wasn't just, just, I mean, the bulk of those committees were citizens that live in this district. So, uh, how many people were on that committee, Amanda? Twenty, thirty? I mean, there was a pretty extensive list of residents.
Thousand people in Clive and you guys got a survey of 249 people. That's not a lot of people. We don't even know if they live in Clive. Apparently 31% of those people in that survey live in the area. That's like 70 some people in there, hopefully.
Well, everybody, everybody on this committee was, lived, lived in this area.
Very difficult to send a, a mailing to the people that was very clear you're going to do something to Harbach. The mailing that came to us was like this area in the 86th Street area, 73rd University is not 86th Street.
Well, I think we've had clear indication.
I understand, hopefully you guys reach out to the community as you move forward and do this again, because it was not very clear to our area and it's not very clear to a lot of business owners. So I hope you figure a way to out to do that because it was very clear at the last meeting. You guys said you don't get very good response from the community. That's nothing new, like figure out a better way to do it.
Well, again, Pete's, uh, we've committed to make sure we, we do that.
Another one of my, besides that big things is I was told this is supposed to help address flooding and it addresses North Walnut or Walnut Creek, but it does nothing to do and address North Walnut Creek. I found out at the end of the meeting. So we're not doing anything to address any of the flooding that's coming from that.
Well, I think Amanda, could you just make one more clarification on that, please? And then we'll move on.
Yes. So the area shown here is the hundred year flood plain that has been mapped. That would include, um, the North Walnut Creek area. There is, or the backup, I should say, that you get from the North Walnut Creek area. There is some flood plain along the backs of the homes that would be on 75th Street backing up to the, the actual physical creek with, which is our shared city boundary with Windsor Heights. The flood plain in that area is significantly below where the homes are built because of the steep grade drop off. So there isn't currently concern that floodwaters get into those homes. So this area is what matches the flood plain boundary and then corresponds to what we've seen through the modeling that has been to a certain extent, unfortunately ground truth through some of our previous events, particularly 2018, when we took GPS information of where the floodwaters had reached and compared it to the modeling and maps. It would have equated to the same level of storm. It was a very close match. So we're, we're pretty confident that modeling would be accurate.
So let me just summarize where we are. Pete's gonna make sure there's something in the October newsletter. Residents have the opportunity to sign up with that link. We'll be sure we reach out and get that information. And again, this is a high level, high level, uh, though we ample opportunity, uh, moving forward as we get into more detail. You know, it's, there's costs associated with that that has to be approved in the budget. So there'll be a lot of chances to look at more granular detail of what, what the plans are. And we don't have that at this stage. We appreciate your input. Thank you. Anyone else here in the chamber who'd like to address the council on 86th? If you would, identify yourself for the record and your address, please.
Corey Crawford, 1580 78th. I've been a resident here playing around this neighborhood, particular neighborhood since I've been six. I know where the flood goes. I, we've been fighting floods since, you know, I mean, I've been knee deep in floodwaters six times, I believe, six or seven. I've basically the water issue is, I mean, I'm not a fan, but I'd rather see green space at the, at the bottom of the street. But my concern is, is if we change the zoning in these areas in the medium density areas. I did, I know, I don't know how, I talked to a half dozen people that are in this area and I had one basic surprising answer is they looked at me and said, well, tell me when it's done because alls I need is a stairwell on the outside of my house to run out my attic, you know? I mean, how, last week we were promised that, or not promised, but told that Clive has never used a forceful buyout type of situation. But 30 years ago, when we built the, now it's a berm, 30 years ago it was a levee. How, how do we? I mean, how do we know that, you know, there's not going to be a forcible buyout when, I mean, none of us will probably be here. You know, I mean, 30 years ago, they said that they built a levee that was to stop the water and it didn't. I mean, the water was coming from the North Raccoon and we didn't have a, that hole plugged. I just, I'm concerned about, you know, what happens? I'm basically speaking for people that, you know, are going to move into this neighborhood when we're gone. You know, and I don't know, it, it, to me, it's opening up problems. If we, you know, change zoning now and, you know, don't, I mean, are we going to allow this guy to run out his attic? You know?
Amanda.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, Matt, I guess you want to take?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to answer it, Your Honor. No, I, one thing I want to emphasize is that in any discussions that the council has had and, and any of the federal partners that we've worked with on flood buyout areas, they require a voluntary participation in buyouts. And that's what we've done up until this point.
But is this area is above the flood line?
That the area that is above the flood line, um, to your, to your point, this plan that is before us does not change any zoning at this point. It'll come later. So there's no zoning change that happens with the council adopting this plan tonight. That would go through a, a formal land use project process when a project is presented to the city. And that would require those property owners to be willing and desirous of that type of project to come forward.
Okay.
So that is, it is a voluntary program from that, that sense. Now, we might, if, uh, as, as Amanda mentioned earlier at the beginning of her presentation with the dotted lines in some areas in the lower density residential, if there is a desire of that particular property owner to look at more density on their lot, for example, an accessory dwelling unit on the back of their property, the back of your property or the back of Mr. Hubbard's property, that'll be up to the you as the property owner to consider. That is what we want, I wanted to emphasize from the beginning that was stated. There isn't involuntary processes that the city is using for this effort. Now, there may be a time at some point in the future where we do have a developer who acquires certain properties and that we'll call it the medium density, the, the gentle housing density area that has acquired those properties rightfully, be entitled, that may come to the city and say, hey, city, we've seen this plan. We like what you're doing with the green space in the flood buyout area. We'd like to propose a, a fourplex or a duplex project on our property to, you know, basically look on to the park space. So that would be the property owner coming forward and the city, you know, considering it at that time. And whether the rezoning would happen at that time or it happened previously, there will be a notification process like we have with any rezoning that the city considers to all adjacent properties.
Okay. I was, I was, at the last week, I was under the understanding that this was a zoning, you know, change, basically, and.
This would recommend a zoning change in the future when that's presented as a potential project. Amanda, I hope I'm shaping that correctly.
Yeah, I, I understand.
This document does not change any zoning with this plan adoption. It recommends in the future to consider it.
Okay. Hope that answered my question.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. We appreciate your feedback. Is there anyone else here in the chamber?
This is clearly being called a plan from what I heard last week. The city was not making a plan to do any of this. The city was not pushing any of this. This really is clearly a plan to make this type of thing happen. I don't know who in the neighborhood asked for this to happen, who pushed for this to happen. I don't know where this came from. I like my neighborhood. I like my big lots. I bought my big lot for a reason because I like it. I don't want the city approaching into my property. If they do this plan and they put in the medium density residential, my lot's only that far up. What's to stop these people from selling out? I've owned my property for 19 years.
But no one's changing or touching your property.
No, they're not, but you got lines drawn through it. This is a plan.
That's a line on a map. There's no one that's coming after.
I know, but you're planning to push for this stuff to happen. You're setting up.
The reason why we're doing this is because we've had flooding in this area over and.
And then you don't want to address the other flooding coming from North Walnut Creek.
That's not true. And everything, as you've heard tonight, everything is.
Are we doing anything on North Walnut Creek?
Yes, we are.
We are.
First of all, we just purchased. This represents the North Walnut Creek and Walnut Creek flood area.
This going up by 75th is not North Walnut.
Seventy, between 75th and 73rd is North Walnut Creek.
Okay. And I see this plan on Walnut Creek, correct? And I heard most, a lot of the water that backs up in this area comes from North Walnut Creek at the end of the zoning planning is what I heard last.
Backs up to the west.
Yeah.
North Walnut Creek.
And we don't plan to do anything about that.
Well, let me make a suggestion. I, I think.
Another thing, I've lived here for 19 years. I'm just planning to do a lot of remodeling. Now, I don't know if it's going to be two or three years till this changes, six, five, seven, 10 years. And I don't know if it's going to change or not. Like I said, I like my neighborhood. I bought into that neighborhood. A lot of people live there for 15, 20, 30 years. A lot of people were upset when a neighbor put up a fence. You can't do anything about it. It's your neighbor. I understand that, but we like our big open yards. You go ask everybody that's connected to my yard, they'll say the same thing.
No one's touching your big open yard. I don't understand the objection. What we're doing is we're trying to buy out homes that are in the flood zone in order to make it park space and make it more resilient for flooding.
The orange stuff and the brown stuff.
Let me suggest, I think the council has a pretty good sense of your concern.
Okay.
And we're gonna do the best we can to address them. Now, if you want to take it offline with, uh, community development, I'm sure they'd be glad to engage you in further discussion. But we appreciate your feedback. Bam, did you have another comment?
Well, it is just going to be something quick. They had mentioned that there was a planning committee. And one of my neighbors I was talking to, actually right before I came here, it was telling us about the various options. And he didn't even know about this until last week. And he was on one of the planning committees. So I just thought I would mention that too, because, you know, we didn't get the mailings. We didn't get the emails. The signs reference Greenbelt. They didn't reference 86th Street plus we're blocks from 86th Street. But then to have committee members who we all know and trust, who actually translated this for some of us because we didn't understand it, we're not engineers like him, and he didn't even know.
Well, I'm not sure who that, who that individual was, and I'm not going to ask for the name. But everybody on the committee had access to the Create Clive website that, that, and was also emailed copies of the plan. It was several hundred pages. It was a very in-depth plan. So we all took a look at that and went over it and then discussed it. So, uh, nobody's tried to hide anything. Every committee had, member had access to all of these maps, had access to the recommended, uh, uh, plan from the consultants right there and had active input into incorporation and implementation of this plan.
Okay. Yeah. And like I said, that's just what he told me right before I came here. We had heard, uh, as part of the Green Belt reconstruction was they were going to turn the flood buyout zone to like wetlands and maybe a water feature like a pond or something. So this just completely, one, we didn't think we were 86th Street. But two, it just caught us out of the park because we weren't expecting potential multi-residential. And so I just, like I said, I thought I'd mention that because there was numerous talks about the planning committee that a number of it said he didn't know.
Well, thanks. Again, we do, we appreciate everybody coming forward this evening with all your comments and suggestions. Staff has been directed to make sure there's something in the October newsletter. And we'll try to make sure that the information gets out. And then there'll be ample opportunity is, we've discussed, this is going to take a long time before changes made. And if the city manager suggested the buyout areas, that's all voluntary. And, uh, this is just a high level plan. And before we get into detail, the granular detail, uh, we'll engage the residents and they'll have plenty of opportunity for feedback. Anything you want to add, Pete?
Your Honor, there is a couple of folks who have joined us online, so if it's all right with you, I'd.
Certainly.
I see if any of them wanted to participate. For those who have joined us in the meeting online, if you'd like to raise your hand, you can use the raise the hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen, click the reactions emoji and then press raise hand. Your Honor, I do not see hands going up.
Thank you for check, checking on that, Pete. We, we appreciate that.
There is a motion on the table right now. To approve the resolution.
Second. Second. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of four to zero. Again, this is a high level plan and we'll look forward to hearing your comments as we go forward. Thank you very much. The next items we have is the SQR program. This is broken down individually so that each council member can abstain from voting on the resolution for the work in their area. So the first one is for SRECON. So would someone like to move that?
Good, move the resolution.
Second. Motion, a second. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? It passes by a vote of three with one extension. Next, we have Eric.
Move the resolution.
Second. Motion, a second for a discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of three yeses and one abstention. Then we have Susan's.
Move the resolution.
Second. Motion a second for discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of three yeses and one abstention. Next, we have Ted. If someone would.
Move the resolution.
Second. We finally have a motion and a second for discussion. If not, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of three yeses and one abstention. Thank you all for moving that along. Next, we have our reports and we'll start with Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor. As of today, as I check our live feed on our SQR program, we have completed sixty-two projects in the city of Clive, making our way now into the Indian Hills Woods neighborhood. I know our crews were working very hard today. We're on track by the end of next week to be done with the batch of eighty-seven property owners who, in a timely way, got engaged. What we were very happy to see after those folks started having the practices done on their yards is that their neighbors came over and said, we'd like to do that as well. We have now added an additional thirty-six properties that we think will be able to take care of and do those practices weather permitting in the first two months of October, which is still well within the range of time for the contract and a good time to go in and do soil quality restoration work. Those thirty, approximately thirty represent in the neighborhood of an additional quarter million square feet of SQR work that will be done. It will, if we pull that off, will far exceed our goal of a hundred households participating and will be getting very close to our goal of a million square feet treated. So fingers crossed, the weather keeps working well with us. We've got a team that's working very hard. The general sentiment we've heard from residents is we really enjoy this practice. We really enjoy seeing this. And we like to see the city getting involved with neighbors this way to help improve their yards and improve the way that we manage water resources in the city.
Could you give one minute, particularly for those who may not be familiar with, with what SQR is and what it does?
Yep, soil quality restoration, SQR. It's a very cost-effective practice to take existing turf and make it better at catching and infiltrating water so that it, before it gets out into the curbs or the storms who are network, it gets there potentially cleaner if it's going through the groundwater or it doesn't get there at all because it's held right there on the property. It's way that we can manage the stress on our stormwater system and the water getting down to Walnut Creek fast and with power, which we know creates a whole lot of additional problems.
Including flooding. So this, you, you said almost a million?
Square feet.
Square feet.
Just about. That's, we're moving toward that goal and that will be a fun round number to share with a lot of folks.
And even with the additional households, uh, we'll stay, we'll be still within budget?
Still within budget, yep. So we've actually kept that number uh slightly lower so we can accommodate some other ancillary expenses like the yard signs that we've been putting up and some of the soil testing we've been doing as well.
You know, I see a lot of people walking by and seeing, reading those yard signs and taking active interest, you know, what the project is. Like you said, it's really picking their interest to potentially be involved next time.
The uh, if it is, as the council continues to evaluate and give us direction, we've got a good list of folks who say we'd like to do this next year if you decide to operate the program, something like it, maybe not the same scale. Um, good news, though, we think there are additional grant opportunities we can pursue with the state of Iowa. Uh, and even if we don't get those dollars, uh, there are some other strategies we can use to put the appropriate budget together.
Very good. What else have you got, Pete?
That's it tonight, Your Honor.
Do you want to mention Indian Hills Woods?
Thank you. Uh, yes, we had a nice turnout yesterday for our meeting in Indian Hills Woods. Appreciate the council, uh, members who were able to attend and the mayor as well. The neighborhood continues to share some concerns about some key parts of the project. The trail surface is one of them, the vegetation restoration, and then also the trail alignment, especially as we talk about how the trail goes from where it is currently today, mostly moving from Lincoln to Ninety-Eighth. They'd also have questions about how the trail would be continued from Ninety-Eighth to a Hundredth Street to the west. So staff will continue to engage the neighborhood to answer those questions. I think we got pretty good direction last night from both the neighborhood and from the council on where you'd like us to put the bulk of our focus with something besides asphalt for the trail surface, staying deeply engaged, especially as we enter into construction, period again. So up to that point tomorrow, I'll be walking the neighborhood in the area that'll be closest to where construction is going to start, roughly from the pedestrian bridge north to Lincoln. And then those properties that are on Lincoln that would be sort of north of, on the north side of the street that will eventually be affected by this as well. So I'll be knocking doors and also dropping off a letter for those folks so that they know that construction's about to start and who they can then get in touch with, with their questions.
Very good. Recut.
Uh, just wanted to say thanks to Pete and city staff for coordinating that and just overall improving the community engagement, right? Uh, you know, that's a process. It's not a, it's not a like switch you flip. So appreciate that and also appreciate the residents coming out, taking time. Uh, but that's it for tonight. Thanks.
Yeah, nothing further. Eric.
Yeah, I enjoyed being, uh, taking part of that again, Mayor and, and Ted and Srikanth, that Indian Hills meeting really got a lot of good feedback. The only thing else that I would offer Pete uh was uh, the vibration was concerned and also PTSD from a, from a dog was something else that a resident was, was concerned about. But perhaps your new name will be Beat the Street Pete as you're out knocking on the doors, visiting with people. Uh, the other thing was uh, also I attended the Clive Chamber lunch today with the city management, Melon here. And uh, Greg Edwards from uh, Catch the Moins CDB was the presenter right there and Srikanth, I picked up your uh.
Appreciate it.
Picture your name tag, uh, because you weren't able to join us. So I just wanted to give you that right there. Uh, that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder to everyone that uh trash is laid one day, so. Already seen some containers out incorrectly, but so public service.
Susan.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Legal counsel.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Matt?
Uh, just a couple of items tonight. Just a reminder that tomorrow night is the last food truck Friday of the season. So it looks like should have some nice weather to get out and enjoy if those that aren't, those of you that aren't at football games. Um, also wanted to follow up from our last council meeting, um, in terms of the dog leash ordinance. Uh, chief put together a nice report, just kind of share with you that information. Um, the, uh, my follow-up conversations or questions that you have all had, I get the sense that the council at this time is comfortable with the citywide uh code as it's laid out. And of course, we're going to be doing some public education on that, just to remind folks of what at heel means and under control. Um, and maybe even do something specifically for that Indian Hills green space, the, the homes around that Indian Hills green space where the concern was brought up by uh, um, Jackie Seymour. And we'll uh likely follow up with her directly, uh, to indicate the council's desire, if that is your desire. That's kind of the head nods that I've received in terms of the citywide uh ordinance. Uh, relation to some questions that have come up, uh, related to the Green Belt Trail Park System itself. We do have uh signage that does indicate having pets on leash uh in that trail system. Obviously, because it's a trail system and you have people going through, one thing I'm going to talk to Richard about is maybe if we can reaffirm those park rules for the Green Belt Trail and Park System, those were likely put in a very, very long time ago. As uh, with, especially when we have the old brown signs that were probably put up back in the seventies that reflected that. Uh, we're trying to research how long that goes back, but I get a sense too that there's uh likely a desire. Again, I appreciate council direction on this to reaffirm um maintaining uh, uh, pets on leash when they're rolling in the trail system and the Green Belt Park System. Um, the city is able to do higher regulation or park rules and park spaces, but still maintain the citywide code as it is outside of the park spaces. So if that sounds appropriate to the council, then staff will proceed with that direction.
For the record, their heads nodding, so.
All right, we will, we will proceed accordingly.
Unless, unless Susan's shaking her head. Susan?
Well, I do want to emphasize that I like the more restrictive approach in the Green Belt.
Very good. Thank you, Susan. So it looks like it's unanimous here.
All right, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, any correspondence? Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at six fifty-nine.